So guys, today we are going to start with data retrieval techniques. So in the ETL testers, we are mostly spending our time in this data retrieval queries only. So what are we going to discuss as a part of this data retrieval techniques? We are going to discuss select statement, from clause, var clause, SPL aliases and order by clause. These are the different things we are going to discuss as a part of data retrieval techniques. So first, let us start with select statement. So where we are using select statement? We are using select queries to retrieve data from one or more existing table, objects, views, object views etc. So this my, in my database, I have data, how that data is present? That data it is present in the form of tables. I wanted to retrieve that data. Retrieving is nothing but bringing the data guys. In this oracle terminology, we call bringing as a retrieving. Whenever I say retrieving, please you please remember that I am just bringing the data. So whenever I wanted to retrieve the data, I need to write my query starting with select keyword only. So whatever the query we are writing using select keyword, those queries they are helpful as to retrieve the data. So simply, my SPL statement, it is used to fetch the data from a database table, which returns data and rows and columns format. The results table are called as a result set. So simply guys, by using SPL statement, we can fetch the data, fetching the data and search the data. If I wanted to bring only a particular data, that means by using this SPL statement, I can search for a particular data and I can bring that data. By using this SPL statement, we can retrieve the data. How we can retrieve the data? We can retrieve the data in the form of rows and columns. So by using this select statement, we are getting the data in the form of rows and columns. That rows and columns, we are going to call them as a result set. So the star operator, it represents all the columns of a table. So guys, this is all about how to write a query using select statement. So now we will go to the database and we will write a simple query using the select statement. So guys, we ETL testers, we are mostly writing our queries starting with select query only. So here I have written select. After that, I have mentioned star. What star represents? Star represents all columns. If I wanted to retrieve all the columns from a table, I need to use star. After star, I need to mention from clause. After from clause, we will mention table name. From which table name, I wanted to retrieve data. Now I wanted to retrieve data from employees table. So here I am writing employees. And after that, I am terminating my query with a simple semicolon. So guys, now I am done with writing a query. So now let me run the query. How to run the query? We can simply run the query by hitting a green color play button, which is present on the top of the worksheet. So here is my play button. Let me hit this button. So you can see this, when I hit this button, I got a output window, which is exactly below my worksheet. In this worksheet, I have got my output. So here you can see this, by running a query, I got an output, which is in the form of tables. What does table compromises of, table compromises of? Columns and arrows. What is a column? This vertical lines are there now. This employee ID, first name, last name, email, phone number, hire date, job ID, salary, commission, PCT, manager ID, department ID. These vertical lines, we call them as a columns. And the horizontal lines. What are the horizontal lines? The line belonging to employee ID hundred and then line belonging to employee ID one not one and then line belonging to employee ID one not two. These horizontal lines, these horizontal lines are called as a rows. Whereas these vertical lines are called as a columns. So guys, simply table consists of rows and columns. When I have run a query, I have got data in the form of table and my table consists of rows and columns. This data, we are calling simply them as a result sets. So now we will go for writing of one more query. So for this query, I will write my query starting with select keyword. After this select keyword, I have mentioned star. Star, it simply represents all columns. If I wanted to retrieve all columns, I would mention star. After the star, I have mentioned from clause. After from clause, I have given my table name as departments. Now I wanted to retrieve what is the data present in the department's table. So I have written in the place of table name departments and I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. So here I have got what is all data present for the department's table. In this department's table, we have only department ID, department name, manager ID, location ID and these are the different rows present in department's table. So guys, this is a simple DRL query for employees table and a simple DRL query for department's table. So guys, whether all are clear with this queries?
Yes, Priyanka.
Okay, so now we will go for the next thing. So guys, previously I wanted to retrieve all the columns. So I have mentioned star. But if I wanted to retrieve only particular columns, at that time how to write our query? At that time, we will be writing in the place of star, we would be mentioning column names. So here I have mentioned column one, comma, column two, comma, column and from table name will be mentioning. So simply star operator, it is used to retrieve all columns. But if we wanted to retrieve only specific columns, we need to mention this column names in the place of star operator. So now we will go for writing of query. So where do we write our queries? This is the database in which we are writing our queries. So guys, out of all these columns, now I wanted to retrieve only employee ID, first name and last name. At that time, how do we write our query? We will be writing our query starting with select keyword. After select, we will mention what are the columns we wanted to retrieve? I wanted to retrieve employee ID. So I have mentioned employee ID. Immediately after writing the first column name, we need to give the separation factor comma. After giving comma only, we need to jump to next column name along with this employee ID. I wanted to retrieve first name and last name. So I am writing here first name. After writing the first name, once again, we need to give the separation factor. The separation factor, we use in our STL as comma. So I have used the same. After this, I am giving the next column name. The next column name, I am giving it as a last name. After this last name, I have mentioned from clause. After this from clause, I am giving my table name as employees. I wanted to retrieve all this data from employees only now. So I have written employees and then I am terminating my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. So you can see, out of number of columns present in the employees table, only employee ID, first name and last name has been retrieved. So this is about how to retrieve a specific columns. Now we will go for another columns retrieval. So now I wanted to retrieve hire date and phone number. At that time, how do we write our query? We will be writing our query starting with select keyword. So I have mentioned the same. After this select, I have mentioned phone number. Along with this phone number, I wanted to retrieve hire date. So I have mentioned the same. So I have mentioned select phone number, comma, hire date. After mentioning, what are all the columns I wanted to retrieve? After that, I have mentioned from clause. After giving from clause, I have given my table name as employees. I wanted to retrieve data from this employees only. So I have mentioned employees and then I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So guys, now we are done with writing a query. So now let me run the query. So you can see this, I have got out of all columns present in the employees table, only phone number and hire date have been retrieved. So now we will go for only retrieving of your columns from the department. So my department table, it is consisting of department ID, department name, manager ID and location ID. So now I wanted to retrieve department ID and department name. How to write a query? We will be writing our query starting with select keyword. So I have mentioned the same. After this select, I have mentioned what are the columns I wanted to retrieve? I wanted to retrieve department ID. So I have mentioned the same, department ID, comma, department name. After mentioning department ID and department name, we are done with all the columns we need to mention from clause. After from clause, we need to give the table name from which I wanted to retrieve the data. I wanted to retrieve the data from departments. So I have mentioned the same and I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. So you can see guys, out of all the columns present in the department table, only department ID and department name has been retrieved. In the next case, I wanted to retrieve manager ID and location ID. How do we write our query? We will be writing our query starting with select keyword. So I have mentioned the same. After select, we will mention what are all the columns we wanted to retrieve? Now I wanted to retrieve manager ID and location ID. So I have mentioned manager ID. This is the name of a column. After that, we will be giving separation factor. After giving the separation factor, I have given my next column name as a location ID. After given both the columns, I have mentioned from clause. After giving from clause, I have given my table name as department. After giving this table name, I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. So now you can see, out of all the columns present in department table, only manager ID and location ID has been retrieved. This is about how to retrieve only all columns and how to retrieve your columns. So guys, are everyone clear up to this part?
Yes, ma'am.
Everyone. Madhav, are you clear?
So far, retrieve the data. Hello?
Yeah, Vijeta, you are audible.
Yeah, madam.
I think you have something. Vijeta, your voice is break.
Are you audible?
Yeah, you are audible but background noise is very much. So please do one thing, whatever your query is, try to do that in chat box now.
It's not, not from, not from. Madhav, I think.
Hello.
Okay, yeah. Madhav, mute yourself. Yeah, Vijeta.
For retrieving the data, uh, instead of star only, we should apply all the scores, right?
Yes.
Put the star, right?
Yeah, exactly, Vijeta. If you wanted to retrieve all columns, you can mention either all column names or you can use star. But if you wanted to retrieve only fear of the columns, at that time you need to go for those column names.
Only for the data what we want, you should write this causes. Otherwise, no need of this star, right?
Yeah. Clear, Vijeta? Vijeta, clear?
Clear, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Shruti, clear? Shruti, are you clear? Yeah, okay then, we will move further. So we would be using star if I wanted to select all columns. Where conditions? When do we use where condition? Where it is used to filter the conditions that must be met for the records to be selected? If no conditions are provided, then all the records would be selected. So guys, previously we have seen how to retrieve all the data. But now I wanted to filter some data. I wanted to filter some data based upon some condition. I wanted to retrieve only if your data. At that time, how to retrieve a data? At that time, we will be using var keyword. After using the var keyword, we will be giving certain conditions and depending upon that conditions only, we are able to filter the record. So now let me write this syntax. The syntax is, we will be writing select. After that, we will mention what are all the columns we wanted to retrieve? After writing all the column names, I would mention from clause. After giving from clause, we need to mention table name. And after table name, we need to mention var clause. So what happens after var clause? If we give some condition, depending upon that condition, my records will be get filtered. The var clause, it is used to filter the records. It is used to extract only those records that fulfill a specified condition. If a given condition is satisfied, then only a particular records will be specified. What happens if we do not give any condition? If we do not give any conditionments, all the records will be retrieved. So now we will go for database. In that database, we will be writing some queries and that time you will be clear. So this is the database in which we are writing our queries. So guys, whatever the queries we are writing, we are going to write our queries starting with select keyword. So I am writing the same. After select now, I wanted to retrieve all columns. Whenever I wanted to retrieve all the columns, I would mention star. After star, I have mentioned from clause. Immediately after the from clause, we need to mention table name. From which table name, we wanted to retrieve the data. I wanted to retrieve data from employees. So I have mentioned the same. After this table name, I am giving var keyword. After giving var keyword, I am giving my condition as employee ID is equals to hundred. So guys, this is the condition I have given. So how my records will be filtered? I will be getting all the values from the employees table only where employee ID is hundred. So guys, consider in first record, employee ID is hundred. This particular record will be retrieved. In the next class, employee ID is one not one. It will be rejected, one or two, it will be rejected. Everything will be rejected apart from hundred. So how it will rejecting, we will run up, we will go for a query and we will see. So guys, you can see here, I have got only a few records from the employee table based upon this condition. Based upon the condition, what we are going to give after the var keyword, on that condition only my records will get filtered. So this is about how to filtering a record. So guys, now we will go for one more example. So here I am writing my query starting with select keyword. After this select keyword, now I wanted to retrieve only employee ID, first name, last name, email. I want, out of all the columns present in the employee table, I wanted to retrieve only these four columns. So I have mentioned the same. After mentioning all the four columns, I have mentioned from clause. Immediately after from clause, we need to give table name. From which table name, we wanted to retrieve the data. I wanted to retrieve all this data from employees now. So I have mentioned the same. So now I wanted to filter the records based upon some condition. Whenever you wanted to filter the records based upon some conditionments, you need to give var keyword. So here I am giving the same. After giving the var keyword, so I am giving my condition as where last name is equals to king. So this is the condition I have given. So where my last name is king, that particular record should be retrieved to us in the output. So now let me run the query. So you can see guys, I have only two records in the employee table where last name is king. So those records have been retrieved to us in the output. This is about how to retrieve the records based upon some condition. So now we will go for retrieving of some data from another table. So here I have written my query starting with select keyword. So guys, we ETL testers, we are going to write our queries mostly beginning with select keyword only. So here I have written my query starting with select. After select, I have mentioned star. After star, I have given from clause. After giving from clause, I have given my table name as departments. I wanted to retrieve data from this department's table only. So I have mentioned the same. After giving this department, now I wanted to filter the record based upon some condition. Whenever we wanted to filter the record, we need to give var keyword. After giving var keyword, I need to give my condition. So here I am giving my condition as department ID is equals to ten and then I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now I am done with writing a query. So now let me run the query guys. So you can see here guys, I have got only where department ID is ten. All others are rejected. Only where department ID is ten, that particular records have been retrieved to us in the output. Depending upon this condition, only my records will get filtered. So now we will go for writing of another query. How do we write our query? We will be writing our query starting with select. After select, I have mentioned star. After star, I have mentioned from. After from, I have given my table name as departments. After that, I am going to give var keyword. After giving var keyword, I am giving my condition as department name is equals to. So guys, you know that whenever we are going to give something related to characters, we need to give that in single quotes. So that is the reason here I am giving administration in single quotes and then I have terminated my query. So now I am done with writing a query. I need to run the query. How to run the query? Simply selecting the query whatever we have written. So you can see here guys, I have got all output window, which is exactly below my worksheet and you can see only the particular record where department name is administration, that particular record has been displayed to us in the output. This is about how to use var keyword and how to give condition. So if you wanted to filter the record based upon many conditionments, you can use logical operator also guys. You know how to use the logical operators that we have discussed in the previous classes. So guys, are everyone clear up to this part?
Yes, Priyanka.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay then. So now we will go for the next topic. The next topic we are going to discuss is STL aliases. What are these aliases? Why are they created? Well know, aliases are created to make table or column names more readable. So guys, aliasing means we are giving us a temporary name to either a table, we can give a temporary name or to a column, we can give a temporary name. Consider my column, my table name or my column name is very big. I wanted to give some short names. I can give by using aliasing. So whatever the renaming here we are making by using aliasing, it is just a temporary change and the table name doesn't change in the original database. So guys, whatever the new names we are giving to the table or a column, they are not the permanent changes. They are only the temporary changes. They are present only up to the time we run the query. Whenever if we are going to for the new arrangements, again we will be having old things only. So when are we going to use this aliases? We are going to use this aliasing. When a table or column name are a very big, at that time we are going to use this aliasing. Generally guys, we are going to use this aliasing when we are involving more than one query in the table. This is the very beginning now. That is the reason we are writing our query with only one table. But in future sessions, we will be write in a single query, we will be using two to three tables name. At that time, we will be using this aliasing. But before using aliasing, you should know when to use aliasing and how to give aliasing. So guys, aliasing means you have got a simple idea. That means aliasing means giving a simple, a temporary name. If we are giving a temporary name to a column, we are calling it as a column aliasing. If we are going to give a temporary name to a table, we are calling it as a table aliasing. So now we will go for the syntax for column aliasing. The syntax for column aliasing is, we will start writing our query with a simple select keyword. After this, I have mentioned column. So guys, for whatever the columns you wanted to give aliasing name, simply after that column name, you need to mention as keyword and after mentioning as keyword, you will mention what is the aliasing name you wanted to give. After that name, you can mention from clause. After giving from clause, we can immediately mention table name and then we will terminate our query with a simple semicolon. So now we will go for database and this database will be writing our queries guys. So we are using aliasing for columns. So as we are using aliasing column or columns, we are calling it as a column aliasing. That means we are giving some temporary names to column. So now I wanted to retrieve this employee ID and for this employee ID, I wanted to give aliasing name. So I have written select employee ID. Immediately after this employee ID, we need to give as keyword. After giving the as keyword, we will be giving a column new name. So the new name I wanted to give to this column is EID. After giving this, we will mention from clause and after mentioning from clause, we will mention the table name. From which table name, I wanted to retrieve data. I wanted to retrieve data from employees table. So I have mentioned the same and I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. Previously, this column, it is employee ID. But now it has been changed to EID. This EID, it is not a permanent change guys, it is only temporary change. If we are running a new car payment, this EID, it will be lost. This is present only to the time up to which we run the query. So now we will give aliasing name for two or columns. How do we write our query? We will be writing our query starting with select keyword. After select now, I wanted to retrieve employee ID. But for this employee ID, I do not want to give any aliasing name. So I am mentioning simply employee ID. After this, I wanted to retrieve this first name and for this first name, I wanted to give aliasing as F name. After this, I have mentioned comma. I also wanted to retrieve last name and for this last name, I am giving. After immediately after mentioning column name, we need to use as keyword. After using the as keyword, we will mention the name. So here I have mentioned as L name and after mentioning all the columns, we will mention from clause. After mentioning from clause, we will mention the table name. I wanted to retrieve data from employees. So I have mentioned the same and I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. So you can see guys, for this employee ID, we did not give any aliasing name. So it is same. For the first name, we have given aliasing name as F name and for the last name, we are given aliasing name as L name. So these are all the columns. So these are all the columns I wanted to retrieve. They have been retrieved and we have gained some alias names to the columns. So guys, are everyone here with the column aliasing?
Yes ma'am.
So now we will go for table aliasing. Table aliasing means simply giving a temporary name to the table. How to give a temporary name to the table? So guys, please do remember one thing, please fix one thing in mind. For giving column aliasing, you need to use as keyword. For use, for giving table aliasing, we need not use any keyword. We can simply give a new name. How to give that new name? Let me show me. So you will mention simply how do you write a simple DRL query? You would start writing like select columns from table name. After this table name, simply if you wanted to give a new table name, you would be giving that table name and you will be terminating your query with a simple. So this table aliasing, it is very much useful when we are using more than one table in a query. At that time only, you can use the new name. But you at this point of time, you could not find where a new name is present. But you only learn how to give new name. Where that new name is present, how to use that new name? I will be showing you in the latter classes. So now let us move for table aliasing. So I written a simple DRL query for the employees table. A simple DRL query for the employees table is select star from employees. Immediately after this employees, we need to give some alias in name. If we wanted to give some alias in name to the table, we are giving aliasing name to the employees as EMP. And then I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So guys, here we are giving a temporary name to a column. So we would call this as a table aliasing. So now let me run the query. So you can see this, here I have got a simple DRL query. And employee's name has been renamed to EMP. Where this EMP is present, we will learn when we go for joins concept. At this point of time, you only learn how to give a nickname to the table. So now we will go for giving of a temporary name to another table. So for that, I am going for a simple DRL query for department. That is select star from departments. And after this departments, I am giving a temporary name as DEPT. After giving this, I am terminating my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. So you can see guys, this department has been renamed to DEPT. This is about giving a table aliasing. So guys, are everyone clear about how to give a nickname to a table? At itself is enough at this point of time. Guys, are you clear?
Clear ma'am.
Guys, every, please respond, go to me clear.
Yes ma'am.
Vamshi clear? So now we will move for the next thing. The next thing we are going to discuss is order by clause. The order by keyword, it is used to sort the result set in a ascending or descending order. So guys, whenever we are writing a sim- Shruti?
Hello.
Samani, yeah, where do you have doubt ma?
Yes ma'am, you told one point for a column alias name, we have to use ASH.
Column as- Not ASH ma, it is ASK keyword.
Oh, ASK keyword, okay, okay.
See, here for giving column aliasing, we are using ASK keyword. But for table aliasing, it is not needed. So what happens if we get the ASK keyword here, it would throw error. So you can see here, it is throwing an error. We need not give ASK keyword for table aliasing. Only ASK keyword is needed for giving column aliasing. That is the-
Ma'am, okay.
Uh, can we use alias table uh while creating table purpose only or retrieval purpose ma'am?
I didn't get your point ma.
Can we use alias uh as table name? In a creating, creating purpose or retrieval purpose ma'am?
Retrieval, only retrieval. At the time of creation, we will be giving original names, whatever the table name we wanted to give. That will be given at the time of table creation. At the time of retrieval only, if we wanted to give some temporary name, we can give. A temporary names are not possible at the time of creation.
Okay ma'am.
That I would be explaining you when we are discussing create command. So now we will move for order by clause. So guys, whenever we are writing a select query, some result has been retrieved to us. So in that result, I wanted to sort that result in some order. I wanted to sort that result in ascending order or descending order. At that time, I need to use order by clause and then I need to sort the records. So simply, order by keyword, it is used to sort the result set in ascending or descending order. So guys, ascending means increasing order and descending means decreasing order. Order by keyword, it sorts the records in ascending order by default. And to sort the records in decreasing order, we need to use DESC keyword. So guys, ascending means increasing order. So what happens when we are trying to sort in ascending order? First will be having a lowest value, followed by all the values will be in the increasing order. When we want, we are trying to sort in descending order. First will be having the highest value first and remaining all the values will be in decreasing order. This is about ascending and descending. So guys, do everyone of you know here what is ascending order and what is descending order? Please guys, do not hesitate. Here everyone are here to learn. If you don't know ascending and descending order, I will be explaining it more clearly. If anyone don't know, please raise your hands guys, don't hesitate. Mother? Yeah, I will explain you. See mother, consider here. I have values of hundred, two hundred, three hundred, seven hundred.
Okay, that I don't, that I know.
Other, you are speaking something? Seven hundred, four hundred, five hundred. Now I wanted to order these values in ascending order. What is ascending order? Ascending order means increasing order. What is increasing order? The lowest value will be present first and remaining all the values will be in increasing order. What is the lowest value in this? The lowest value in this is hundred. For that, the remaining all the values will follow an increment order. So what is the next highest value? Two hundred. And then the next increasing order is three hundred. And then the next value we have is four hundred. And then the next value is five hundred. And then it is seven hundred. This is how to sort the records in ascending order. So now we will go for how to sort the records in descending order. When we are trying to sort the records in descending order, the highest value will be present first and remaining all the records will be in decreasing order. What is the highest value first? First highest value is seven hundred. And then the preceding value is five hundred. And then the next lowest value is four hundred. And then the next value is three hundred. And then two hundred. And then the hundred. So this is about ascending and descending order. So guys, whether everyone are clear about ascending and descending order?
Yes ma'am.
So now we will sort the records in this ascending and descending order only. So guys, the syntax for sorting is we will simply write our query like a simple D R Q query. We will mention select. After that, we will mention column one, column two, so on from clause. After from clause, we will mention table name. And after table name, we will be using order by. So I have got my result set in that result set on which column I wanted to sort. If I wanted to sort based on salaries, I would write order by salary. After order by salary, we need to mention. If I wanted to sort in ascending orderments, guys, please do remember ASC, it is an optional parameter. You can simply mention order by salary or ASC. It sorts the records in ascending order. But if you need to sort the records in descending orderments, you need to mention DESC only. So how to sort? Now let me show you in the database. So here I am writing query, starting with simple D select keyword. After select, now I wanted to retrieve all columns, so I have mentioned start. After star, I have mentioned from. After from clause, I have given my table name as employees. So immediately after the table name, now I wanted to sort the result set. How I wanted to sort? I wanted to sort under order of salary. So I have written order by salary. So guys, now I wanted to sort the salary in ascending order. If I wanted to sort the result in ascending orderments, I need not mention ASC. If I want, I can mention or I cannot mention, it yields the same result. So now I will not mention and I will simply terminate the query and I will show you. So guys, you can see here, I am trying to sort the records in ascending order. What is ascending order? The lowest value will be first and remaining all will be in the increasing order. So let me mention here ASC keyword and we will see. So by using ASC keyword also, my records, they got sorted in ascending order. To sort the records in ascending order, ASC keyword is optional. If you mention or if you did not mention, it is not going to be changed. But if you wanted to sort the records in descending orderments, you need to mention DESC. So simply after order by salary, you need to mention simply DESC. And then you need to terminate your query with a simple semicolon. So guys, what happened here? Here my records, they got sorted in descending order. First we have the highest value and remaining all the values are proceeding with that. Seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand, fourteen thousand, thirteen thousand, five hundred. So guys, this is about sorting the records in ascending order and descending order. Are you guys clear up to this part? Now to me.
Priyanka.
Yes?
Uh, before using ascending.
Yeah.
Salary came from, it started with the two seventeen hundred, right?
I didn't get your point, once again you please repeat now.
Do one thing, can you go to the, take that one off, take off that placing order and just remove it once.
The table is, probably it is in ascending order, right?
By default?
It's in ascending order.
But the salary, it came another values, right? That's what I'm asking. See if you run.
Let me run the query and show you. Without any sorting, you are asking me now?
Yes.
By default, it is present in descending order, not the ascending order. Here we have the salaries in decreasing order now.
Okay.
Are you trying to ask the same?
I will not that one. I wrote.
Uh, I am getting disturbance. So can you drop the same in chat box? Yes, mother, we need to use order by clause only for numeric values. See here, we can't arrange first name or the last name. There is no highest first name, no highest last name, no. That is not present. But there is a highest number. As there is a highest number, we need to use this order by clause only for the numeric values. Madhav clear? Vijeta, are you typing your query in the chat box? So guys, in the meantime, what about the remaining people? Are you clear?
Yes ma'am.
Shruti clear? Venkatesh, are you clear?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
You have wrote salary clause and I am trying to sort it in the order of salary. That is the reason after order by, I have mentioned salary. If I wanted to sort it in the order of employee ID, means I would be mentioning order by employee ID. Now let me run the query and show you. So here employee ID by default, it is sorted in the ascending order. But if I wanted to sort in descending orderments, I would be mentioning DESC and I will run the query. So which column you wanted to sort? If you want to sort the salary column, if you wanted to write your clause based upon the salary, you would be writing order by salary. If you wanted to mention, if you wanted to arrange it in the order of employee ID, you would be mentioning order by employee ID and then you will write the query. So here I have mentioned DESC and then I have terminated my query. So you can see here, the first I have two not six and then two not five and then two not four. This is because here I have written DESC. It has been sorted in the order of employee ID. Vijeta clear?
Yes, I got it there. Priyanka.
So now let me show you. Now I want so here I have written order by salary comma manager ID. Can anyone guess what happens in this case?
The salary and manager ID will change, means uh according to the descending and ascending.
How they will get changed?
It takes some difficulties, right? Manager ID can be different and salaries may be different. Often only based on salary, it will get order, it will use order by clauses.
Yeah guys, thank you, you made our effort. It will get, it will take both the figures into consideration. How it will take? First, it will be order by salary. After salary, we did not mention ASC or DESC. If we did not mention anything, means it would be sorted in ascending order. So that is, we will be having the lowest value first. When sorting in the order of lowest values in ascending order, if it finds some value is repeating, some repeating value is there, means it would be taking consideration into manager ID. When there is a matching value in salary, at that time only, it goes for manager ID. And again, it goes for manager ID. In this manager ID, it will see whether it is ascending or descending order. Again, we did not mention here ASC or DESC. This manager ID, it will also be sorted in ascending. So now let me show you. So I will run the query. So here you will see guys, what happens? First, it is sorting in on the order of salary. The first salary is twenty one hundred, it is present for one, so it is well and good. Next, we have a twenty two hundred salary, it is repeating. So there is matching value in the salary. When there is a matching value in the salary, it would jump for the next column. When there is a matching value in the salary means, it would jump for the next column. The next column we have is manager ID. So it will be sorted in the order of manager ID. That is one twenty and one twenty two. And then it will go for salary again twenty four hundred, it is repeating. Again, it is repeating means it will go for manager ID. And then again, the lowest value will be present and then the next highest value one twenty and one twenty two. When there is a matching value in the salary, then only the next column will be taken into consideration. This is about if we give multiple columns. This is about how the sorting will done if we have given multiple columns. Shruti clear?
Yes ma'am.
Vijeta clear?
Yes, Priyanka.
Yeah guys, about the remaining people?
Priyanka?
Yeah ma'am.
So we'll wind up the session here.